Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we can case stand. Join Councilman Williams and the pledge to our flag of country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is safe, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for our prayer.
Thank you, God, for the peace and security we enjoy today and the stability we often take from around it. We pray for these you have placed in a position of responsibility to give them wisdom and discernment and to execute justice well, to honor and protect those living decently and productively, and to punish those who do wrong. Help them to govern for the welfare of the city. I pray for open minds and listening ears to engage wise counsel as they face issues requiring understanding that encompasses many areas. I thank you for these leaders, your servants, and pray your blessing and protection for them and their families. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. I'll order our city council meeting of August 17th. The second item on the agenda is public comments, community announcements, and recognitions. I think we have one announcement by Ms. Matthews. If you would please come to the podium, state your name and address. You have five minutes.
Good evening, everyone. I am Evelyn, Evelyn Nephew, 524 East Perkins, right here in Guthrie, Oklahoma. I wanted to address the council tonight because I think there's a need for us to have a park, a park in the southeast quadrant community of Guthrie. Mayor, I think, and I apologize if I get it wrong, but I thought I read somewhere that we had ten parks in the city of Guthrie.
It's close to that, yes.
Right. And none of them are in the southeast quadrant. And I think we have enough citizens in that area where we probably deserve a park. We've never had a park in that area. So it's probably time now that we do. I have my committee here behind me who's coming to support that we need this park. And I can tell you, one young lady here, her name is Sister Ruth Wooton, grew up here in Guthrie. Went away, got married, went away for about, what, thirty years? And came back home to Guthrie. And there's still no park. So, all right, so she's gonna wanna address some of the issues about our park that she thinks we just might need to have.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. And one of the concerns that I have is that...
Excuse me. Name and address.
Okay, my name is Ruth Wooton, 507 East Perkins, Guthrie, Oklahoma. I moved here from North Carolina. And one of the concerns that I have, I have been away from Guthrie almost forty years. And as the traffic is getting so busy, the cross Division or the cross Noble, it seemed like it'd be hard for mothers, you know, if they wanted to take their kids to the park if they didn't have transportation or something like that. And I know just for me to make a left turn on Division, the traffic is like enormous, you know. And even crossing Noble, you know, sometimes I think right at Drexel, it's like four lanes you have to get across. So I think that would be very good that we could have a park in that quadrant. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, she just took some of the words right out of my mouth. I mustn't know her for some reason. But anyway, that's the gist. That's what she said. So I think that we probably need to look at that. And if my two councilmembers in Ward Two would support the need and then give an opportunity to look at it, I think you will agree with us that that's what we need. I signed up to be on the park board. And when I was looking at the agendas and what we had and what our duties were, and I said, well, we were to look at the parks and give directions on what we need to do. But there was no park in the southeast quadrant. And I said, well, that's my first agenda. So anyway, that's why I'm here tonight. And that's what I wanted to address tonight. And so if y'all would consider it, I know you're getting ready to go into your retreat, and I'm not sure if that's one of the items. But you can always make it a future item. But that's what we would like to see. And to call on us if you have any questions or concerns about what should be there or what should not be there. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Nephews, for your comments. I'll move on to item number three, which is consent agenda items A and B.
Can I? I thought, weren't we doing... Wasn't Leroy gonna start reading these?
No, not this meeting.
Oh, I thought, okay. Maybe I was confused.
Consent agenda items A and B. A is the approval of the minutes of Public Works Authority meeting held of August 3rd. And B is the approval of Budget Amendment Number Four, which amends seven different funds in our fiscal accounts. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
In a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? Submit your votes. See the votes. Unanimous approval of consent agenda items A and B. Number Four, Discussion and Acceptance of Fiscal Year, 2020 Annual Financial Statement and Independent Audit Report. Tim, are you leading that?
I'm gonna make the introduction. There is no compliance or internal findings in our audit this year. And if you look at page eight of the audit report or page eighteen of your agenda packet under financial highlights, for the fiscal year that was audited ended September 30th, 2020, the city's total net position increased by over $1.8 million from the prior year's net position. So our funds have grown. During the year, the city's expenses were $13.8 million and were funded by program revenues of $5.7 million and taxes and other general revenues of $7.8 million. In the city's business-type activities such as utilities, program revenues exceeded expenses by just under $1 million. Sales and use tax by just under $800,000 or 11% more than the prior fiscal year. As of September 30th, the end of the year that was audited, General Fund reported an unassigned fund balance or unbudgeted fund balance of $3.2 million, which is 41% more than the prior year. But bear in mind, some of that is the COVID care money is why it's so dramatic. And for budgetary reporting purposes, the General Fund reported revenue over estimates of $100,000 or 1%. And expenditures were under appropriations or budget by $551,000. So FY '20 was a good year for us. And it appears that FY '21, our current budget year that's getting ready to end, will be another good year for us from a funding standpoint. And with having a clean audit with no findings, everything was done according to state statute and our charter as far as how we operate the city. That's a pretty good report. We have, of course, financial people here. If you have specific questions or anything to address. But from a general standpoint, it was a very attractive audit.
Moved approved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion or questions of Leroy or the representative? Submit your vote.
I'll vote, Brian.
See the vote. Unanimous approval then to accept to accept that financial statement and independent audit report. Item number five, Discussion and Possible Action to Approve Change Order Number Two for the wastewater treatment plant, decreasing the contract amount by a little over $181,000 and adding 23 days, calendar days, to the contract.
I'll do an introductory report. Of course, this is the contract on the main plan itself. On your agenda packet, I put a little spreadsheet in there. The original contract was for $15.2 million in January. When we issued it, we did immediately a change order of a negative $1,26,669. This change order that we're doing tonight would be change order number two, which would be an additional negative $181,500, which makes the contract now $13,991... Eight hundred and thirty-one dollars, I'm sorry.
Thirteen million.
Yes. I read it wrong. We appealed originally, in the design, there were some features on slope in the floor that we felt weren't warranted. But the guidelines required it, so we had to go through an appeal process. It was included in the original design because of that. Then we had to go through the appeal process. They agreed with us, so now we don't have to do that. And it reduced the amount of concrete that we have to have for the project.
Questions of Leroy? Or Tenny? What constitutes inclement days?
It's a rainy, rain weather days that they was not able to work out there being just too bad for one.
All right. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second. A motion and a second. Any other discussion? Submit your votes.
I'll vote, Brian.
See the votes. Unanimous approval to approve change order number two, decreasing $181,500 to the contract and adding 23 calendar days to the contract.
No change in amount on this. And this is a contract for the lift station portion of the project. It's just giving them the additional weather days adding to the length of the period they have to complete the project.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? Submit your votes.
I'll vote, Brian.
See the votes. Unanimous approval then, change order one, adding 48 days to the contract for young contracting. Item number seven, Discussion and Possible Action to Approve Change Order Number Two to the wastewater treatment plant for an additional 48 days and increasing the contract by a little over $50,000. Leroy?
Again, this is Section C, the off-site piping portion of the project. And we will be adding the additional weather days to this contract as well. And this one, again, there's a spreadsheet to show under item seven, the beginning amount on January 19th and the two change orders that occurred. Of course, change number one was a deduct. And this one is an additional $50,000. As part of this project, there was unforeseen subsurface conditions and changes in the creek flow line since the survey data because this project started in design and was over a long period of time. Things change. And so with the change of the conditions in the creek, additional bore length was necessary for the two bores, for the affluent main and forced main crossing the creek. And to provide crater cover over the pipes, those had to be extended, and that cost more money.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any other discussion or questions of Leroy? Submit your vote.
I'll vote, Brian.
See the votes. Unanimous approval then for change order number two. Item, that being the last item on our agenda for Public Works. We are adjourned. And I call to order our city council meeting of August 17th. Consent agenda is the second item. Consent agenda items A, B, C, and D. A is the approval of the minutes of City Council of August 3rd. B is a confirmation of the Public Works action accepting the fiscal year 20 annual financial report and audit report. C is the approval of Budget Amendment Number Four, which again amends those seven different funds. And D is the approval of the 2021... 2021, 2022 School Resource Officer Agreement between the City of Guthrie and the Guthrie School District of Logan County.
So moved. Second.
A motion and a second. Is there any discussion or questions in any of those items?
On the school resource officer, they're still paying that, right?
The school pays the eighty-seven thousand?
Yeah.
Which is not the total cost of the officers, but that's what the school is paying. Was that your question?
Yes. And what's our contribution on that?
We...
It's about double then.
We pay, and there's a spreadsheet in your packet. What the format that we use is they pay for the three lowest officers because the concept is, even though the officers that are school resource officers are more tenured and higher paid, to replace them, their cost is based on the three newest officers that replaced them from being on the street. And of those three, we provide one of them at our cost. And then they pay 77% or 75% of two of the officers. And 75% is based on, of course, in the summertime, we use them as lake officers. But our cost for the three positions, if you look at the three lowest-paid positions in the department, is roughly $149,000 projected for next year. And the bias providing one at no charge and then paying 75% of the other two, their contract with us is for $85,000. And that's the same format that we've used for a number of years.
Page 127. $85,000 they pay, and our cost is approximately $150,000?
Yes.
Any other questions? Submit your votes.
I'll vote, Brian.
See the votes. Unanimous approval then of consent agenda items A, B, C, and D. Item number three, Discussion and Possible Action on Resolution 2021-19, accepting an ARGP grant for the airport.
This is the third amount of money that we've gotten relative to COVID funds. Of course, the first two, if I remember right, came through the CARES Act. This is funding that's coming through the American Recovery Grant Program. It's $59,000. It was approved. It can be used for airport maintenance and operation expenses such as payroll, contractual services, utilities, purchasing, or payment of debt service. And we would recommend accepting these grant funds. And it will offset some of our expenses at the airport.
Okay.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any other discussion or questions of Leroy?
Get your new zero turn out there, girl. Speed up your mota.
All right. Submit your votes.
I'll vote, Brian.
See the votes. Unanimous approval then to accept the ARGP grant for the airport, approximately $59,000. Item number four, Discussion and Possible Action on Resolution 2021-21, to cast a vote to nominate our own Leroy Elsa to the Board of Trustees for District Six.
Yep. So the Oklahoma Municipal Retirement Fund has a spot open. A couple meetings ago, we elected Leroy, passed a resolution to have Leroy added to that ballot. So this is an opportunity for us to cast our vote for Leroy.
Is that what you want, Leroy?
You have to be involved to have influence. And they don't forget that you exist, so, yes.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any other discussion? Submit your vote.
Thank you.
Unanimous approval then to vote for Leroy to be on that board. Item number five, Discussion and Possible Action, Resolution Number 2021-22, executing the agreement between the Oklahoma Municipal Management Services and approving our management fee, or, I'm sorry, membership fee of $4,000. Leroy?
This is a relatively new group that was created through the City Managers of Oklahoma Association. They have really come on in the last few years and grown stronger. The first couple of years, because of our financial situation, was not as healthy as we thought it might be or should be. We didn't join. But now that our financial situation is in good shape, we would recommend that we join this group. They provide, they're almost go past OML as far as the quality and type of services they provide for management of a community. So they do provide a lot of research and resources. And we would recommend joining this organization.
Why is Hera and Mustang specifically identified as partners?
Those were the two that formed it originally.
Oh, okay.
And so we will be joining that group.
Does the membership include multiple people or one? Or does that work?
It is a city membership, but it would be if my name is City Manager because it's a city manager group.
So you could assign people to go to it or if you want?
Correct. Or to get information from them.
So is the basis kind of sharing of not only knowledge, but let's just say...
It's similar to OML and ACOG, only better.
Motion approved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Submit your votes.
I'll vote, Brian.
See the votes. Unanimous approval then on Resolution 2021-22, agreed with the Oklahoma Municipal Management Services. Item number six, Discussion and Possible Action to Approve Resolution 2021-23, establishing a 911 emergency telephone fee for calendar year 22. Leroy?
This is a standard resolution that we are required to pass every year to set the fee at 3% for 911 so that it can be collected on telephone bills to fund the 911 process that is administered through ACOG. And so this is a standard resolution we adopt every year.
So moved. Second.
A motion and a second. Any other questions of Leroy or discussion? Submit your vote.
I'll vote, Brian.
See the votes. Unanimous approval then, Resolution 2021-23, establishing a 911 fee for calendar year 22. Item number seven, Discussion and Possible Action to Approve Resolution 2021-24, approving a weighted vote amendment agreement to the 911 ACOG.
This one, of course, ACOG is made up of different-sized cities. And it's traditional that the voting is weighted based on population and other factors. The mayor could probably provide a better explanation on this. But this is just some amendments to that process that was approved by this particular board of ACOG. And I would see no reason for us to object to it. If we did, we were gonna be out... We'd be outvoted anyway, but...
It was the same last year, I believe, wasn't it?
This one is a new one because they are making amendments to an old thing, trying to provide some, I think, better balance.
That's true. They're trying to facilitate, especially for smaller cities, to give them a little bit more voice in the 911 process. Because it used to be weighted based upon a number of landlines. And of course, that, there's not too many of us that still have them, I being one. But then, now they've changed to population. But when they changed to population, they changed the weighting of the vote. So it's a little bit of a change, Brian.
So moved. Second.
A motion and a second. Any other discussion? Submit your votes.
I'll vote, Brian.
See the votes. Unanimous approval then of Resolution 2021-24 for the weighted voted amendment for ACOG. Item number eight.
We were doing so good.
Discussion... To request appeal of the...
I'm kidding, Dan.
...C decision to deny a request for certificate of appropriateness for a facade on Oklahoma Avenue, et cetera, et cetera. Dan, you want to start us off?
Yes. And I'm gonna give some of the highlights, the big picture. The applicant is here, and he's prepared to give a presentation. So he will go into a little bit more specifics on what the project is entailing and what they're going to be looking at. But in general, this is a application that went to the Historic Preservation Commission. They're looking to do some facade changes. It's the buildings located at Wentz in Oklahoma on the northeast corner there. It was recently a bike shop. And the building next to it was a Mexican restaurant. As part of the app... Or when the application went to the Historic Preservation Commission, it was a 3-3 vote. There was one abstention, which counts as a no. So it ended up with not an approval. There is an ability through our Historic Preservation Ordinance to appeal any decision to the city council. The applicant in this case has decided to do such. And so that's why it's here tonight in front of you for your decision. I just wanted to hit a couple highlights about it. In the staff report I provided you, there's a lot of information on storefronts and redoing storefronts. I think there's a couple things to keep in mind. One, the current storefront is not historic. It's been changed a number of times over the years. Some may say for better, some may say for worse. But nonetheless, it's not original. The National Park Service has a lot of the verbiage on rehabilitation, renovation, preservation that a lot of our local design guidelines are based on. And even the state Historic Preservation Offices that also oversee a lot of this. And I provided that information to you. And I think there's a couple key points here. One is, it talks about if the historic front, storefront is gone or can no longer be rehabilitated or renovated, you can actually go to a more modern, or as it says in there, contemporary-type look. So it doesn't necessarily have to say, okay, we gotta revert back to 1889 type of stuff. With that, it does say, much like new construction, that it should have, be complementary to the building and overall have compatibility with your district. Another thing to keep in mind with any of the buildings in downtown, whether it's the National Park Service or our guidelines, they don't want to have to where every building starts to look the same. We obviously have a lot of unique architecture in our downtown. And a lot of the restoration and preservation guidelines state that you shouldn't go and look at other buildings and take that and throw it on a building because everything starts to look the same. It should be complementary and, again, have its own uniqueness. So with that, I'll leave it at the council. You've had that information. If you have any questions from me. If not, I'll turn it over to the applicant, and he'll be able to go into more specifics.
Any questions of Dan? All right?
Thanks, Dan.
Mr. Taylor?
Mr. Mayor? I hope you all can see this. But I'm here representing Town and Country Investments who's wanting to make a significant investment in the city of Guthrie on these buildings. My name is Mark Taylor. I'm a registered commercial interior designer authorized by the State Board of Architects. A little bit about me. So I am a registered commercial interior designer. I am a member of the Oklahoma Board of Governors of Licensed Architects, Licensed Landscape Architects, and Registered Commercial Interior Designers. I was appointed by the governor. I've served on that board for ten years. I've been the chairman twice. And I was just reappointed by Governor Stitt for another five years. Whoops, went the other way. I'm also Oklahoma's delegate to the National Council for Interior Design Qualification, which is the major qualifying organization for our profession. And I was the designer of the 2020 renovation of the Oklahoma Governor's Mansion. To give you a little local perspective, I was the interior designer for the complete renovation of the Dominion House about 20 years ago. I did both the personal residence and the wedding facilities that are at Dominion House. The project that we are talking about here is 202 and 204 East Oklahoma Avenue. My client wants to do a themed sports bar and grill featuring Oklahoma memorabilia and antiques and decor. The adjacent facility, which is what was currently the Mexican restaurant, what was a Mexican restaurant, a Mexican restaurant, is to be a flexible space event center with possible use as an evening or weekend restaurant. Having eaten here in, in Guthrie on weekends, I would say we need that. It will bring activity and a renewed life to the historic downtown Guthrie and particularly east of Division Street and east of Wentz. And it will restore significantly and significantly upgrade two historic buildings that are in very bad disrepair at the moment. It will also bring added tax revenue to the city of Guthrie. So, I've shown here first the picture of the south elevation, which is Oklahoma Avenue. And you can see the, the, the two parts of this building are significantly deteriorated. And here's a little close-up of the current condition. Then we go to the west side. This is the current elevation and a little detail, the windows are knocked out, everything's deteriorated and the building is, is just really in bad shape. So, now onto what we want to do. Here is the proposed south elevation. And the, I will say this, there's a note here, the north and the east elevations, which are alleys, will remain the same except they will have fresh paint and be cleaned up. We propose to put bronze double hung windows installed on all of the upper level. That fits the historic guidelines. These will be wood windows with aluminum cladding for long-term use. We propose wood and glass entrance doors. I've shown an oval one there, which would meet a lot of what is already in, in the current historic buildings. Black canvas steel awnings and steel awnings, these are also within your historic guidelines and you will see they were previously located on this building, as you'll see from previous photos. Then we are going to do, what we want to do is a retractable door. My client envisions a place where people could come for, on a nice evening like this, they can open the doors, maybe sit outside and, and enhance the space and of course, enhance that whole corner and its beauty in the meantime. So, we've shown one way to do these doors, which would be a divided light, and I will show you examples of that already in historic buildings in, in the city. But we're looking at a couple of options. Here is the west elevation, again adding the, the awnings, cleaning it up, the same kind of windows, the double hung windows on the top. There is a spot on that building already on that side that's been deteriorated and has been painted in the past, so we plan to paint a logo, which has yet to be really designed. And have one retractable door. I will note that the history of this building will show that the door on the far right, where we do have the retractable door, was originally a garage door, because this was a carriage building, or a carriage manufacturer and a car sales building. So, that was originally a garage door to start with. Our color selections for the whole project are using Sherwin-Williams American Heritage Historic Preservation Palette and the Benjamin Moore Historic Color Collection. So, all of those are true historic colors. These were also inspired by these current Guthrie downtown buildings. And then here's another one, which I think was Granny Had One, that old building, it has all of these colors in the facade. Also wanted to point out that the divided light, which was a point of contention with the historic preservation, you will see that this is located a few doors down from where we sit right now in the F.O. Lutz Building on West Oklahoma. Those doors, which were, I believe, in the Reagan movie, from what I saw, were considered acceptable for that, for history. So, even that design, I think, works for what we're doing. However, we've come across another design, which I like very much. This divided light door, which is a larger divided light, hopefully we can do something like this. This is a 120-year-old building in the historic district in Collum County, Texas. And those large divided lights that you see there are actually doors that retract and open that up to the outside. So, I presented both ways today because since finding these pictures, I've done a little research and have yet to find a manufacturer, or in town at least, that says they can do this. So, I've presented both options with the divided light, a little bit more divided than the larger version like this. And here is my historic picture showing the awnings were previously installed on both of those buildings. So, and then a signage bracket that I've got included is actually a very similar one on the building right next door. So, this also fits with the, the feel of current historic downtown Guthrie. I've got lighting also proposed off, on both elevations of that building. And though the only place that they're located in Guthrie is on the Hoboken Coffee Building, this same type lighting is on this Victorian building in, in New Jersey, and I think fits very well into the feel. And that's the end of my presentation.
So, you're saying that you can't find the doors that open, or you will be able to find the doors?
Can't find somebody to build them.
The, we can find the doors that open.
Right.
It's just can we get them where they have only four divided lights like this one?
Yeah, I like that.
Me too.
Right. So, if at all possi.
But it also, now, those would be metal or steel, not wooden.
They would have to be for stretched.
Currently, HP says everything below has to be wood.
Right.
Which, I'm in favor of metal or steel if we could get some.
Yeah, absolutely. We have metal awnings at this point.
This design can be done with wood. And we'd have wood panels on the bottom, which would look very much like other buildings in downtown Guthrie.
I, I salute you for already making changes that were recommended by HP. Then I see the wooden door. I think on your initial presentation, it wasn't necessarily a wooden pedestrian door.
Correct.
And, and, and also I think the upper windows were a little bit different on your original.
We had two proposals. This was one, the other one was a, a.
Okay, maybe I just saw the other proposal. And, and also your, your use of colors that you see around the community, I think is a very positive thing, that you're making an effort to blend with the rest of the community. So, I think that's very positive and.
I don't think, I think, I mean, the black looks great. I think we're starting to use a lot of black. So, as Dan points out, you don't go around to see what everybody has around the block and use that, because now you aren't differentiating yourself.
Right.
And you're starting to look like everybody else. I understand the blue was a hu, huge contention, whether you liked it or didn't like it. I don't, it doesn't matter to me, but I, I mean, I think.
And I actually took that blue from another, well, it's gone away. There's another building.
Blue bill.
There you go.
That's what we put on it. We're the ones that put the blue bill together, so yeah, that's what.
Do they realize the neighbors are rough on that end of town?
Well, that'll start to change.
So, what is your preferred on the doors? Show me your preferred scenario on the doors.
Personally, I like both. The.
But being preferred, which would you rather?
I'm sorry, I forget which way I'm going here. I, I personally like the look of this, just because I think it will be, first of all, I know we could do it with wood.
How do they go up, they roll?
Those would be, those would be a, a rolling.
Like a regular garage door.
Kind of like a regular door. Now, the one that's on the, under the word restaurant will just be a window that is made to look like the other doors. There's only two.
So, it's just bar and grill is really the, the.
The retractable, yeah.
And lower on the west side.
Correct.
So, the bar and grill opens up, the restaurant doesn't?
Correct.
On either scenario?
Now, I will throw in the caveat that my client could say, no, I want them both to open. I don't know that. At this point, that's not the plan.
So.
But it would not change the look.
So, what is the issue?
Well, the issue is HP denied it.
Well, I understand that. But what is their issue? I didn't watch it.
Well, the, I think the primary issue dealt around the retractable doors. And from staff's perspective, as Dan indicated, this is not a building on the historic register. It, the existing storefront is in bad condition. It, it's not original. It's not historic. So, you can repurpose and, and it, change it as long as it's compatible to the rest of the building and to the historic district as, as they're proposing. They're readapting the use of the building to a restaurant and bar. Staff is very supportive of the using retractable doors for the open-air concept as a viable business concept with the possibility of outside dining at some point in the future, which we think is very viable. We, staff leans a little bit more towards the second set of doors, because it looks more like a traditional storefront than the other. We're not married to that, but what.
We're gonna have to make a decision on that or this.
What, what staff is recommending tonight is that city council overturn the HPC decision and accept all their recommendations, but allow them to work with city staff to select, make a final selection of the retractable doors and work with city staff to finalize that.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
We have, we have a motion in a second.
And we're overturning HPC is the motion.
Right.
And allowing them to work with staff.
With the changes that they've made.
Correct.
We're not saying anything about the changes. We're just overriding HPC, correct?
Correct. And you're accepting their plan with the exception of the retractable doors, because there's two options. City staff will work with the owner and the designer and come up with something maybe in between the two proposals. But the goal would be to, when they're down, to maybe look more traditional storefront with the bigger panes where you can see in, may not be either one of those exactly. But we will work with the owner and the designer to come up with something that accommodates more of a storefront approach, but pleases them as well.
But are we also not accepting what HP recommended in terms of the pedestrian door and windows?
And that is in their term proposal.
It's in there.
They've already accepted it, HPC.
We're basically pushing this to city hall and the architects.
Is that agreeable, the staff's recommendation to the designer?
Well, we have a, a.
Is that a question you're asking?
I just wanna make sure that my motion was acceptable.
That's agreeable to you, right?
That proposal?
To.
Yes, definitely.
Okay, good.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion in a second.
And this, and this does not have to go back before HP.
No.
Or council. We're done here.
Yep.
They're approved.
If we approve it.
It's approved.
Any other, any other discussion? Nothing of Mr. Taylor? Leroy?
Nope.
Submit your votes.
I'll go first.
See the votes.
There you go.
Unanimous approval then to overturn the HPC and to work with Mr. Taylor and the owner and city staff on the resolution of the, of the.
Doors.
Doors, the retractable doors.
Okay.
Impressive resume, by the way. I know you'll do us proud.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Certainly intended.
Yeah, go make it look like the Dominion House.
Pardon me?
Go make it look like the Dominion House.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, let's see. Item number nine, discussion possible action to approve purchase of a mini track loader with a dirt bucket.
Motion approved, second.
Tanny, you got any, you got any questions of us? No. All right, we have a motion in a second. Any other discussion on the purchase of this, these, these pieces of equipment? Submit your votes.
Go buy them, Tanny.
Thank you guys. Thank you all.
Unanimous approval to buy the whole shooting match.
Brown's gonna stop and say.
No problem.
Item number 10, city manager report.
Nothing to report.
I, I think I did all my talking at the retreat last Friday.
Thank you.
So, I don't have any additional report tonight.
Okay, and.
Obviously, same with council.
Item number 11, comments from members of the city council, vice mayor case.
I don't have anything on that.
Okay. Councilman Long?
Uh, yeah, I'd like to first see, I guess, evaluate. We discussed the retreat that the city manager would read the report, so let's, let's do what we need to do to make that happen. I think that would be, we all decided that was a great idea, so I appreciate it that we did that. And I also appreciate you guys approving the H, overturning HP. I think HP has lost their way and they need to be ranked in quite personally on what their responsibility to the city of Guthrie is in our historic district. They approved a metal building in the historic district and then they wouldn't approve this. Makes no sense.
Councilman Taylor?
He's right. I, I heard that too, so, and thank you, Tanny and staff, I appreciate, especially Dan. He kept it short, so I appreciate you doing that, Dan. No, and anybody thanks staff, I appreciate it. Other than that, that's it.
Councilman Williams?
Well, Ms. Kim asked me to point this out for the public to understand that as far as this equipment package goes, that the city provided in-kind labor and equipment on the mineral wells project and received $53,703 in reimbursement from the land and water conservation grant. And so, that went towards the purchase of this. So, it's an important thing to know for the citizens to know. Additionally, that aside from all the civil, what, what'd you call it? Your report on this, this restaurant, or this bar and grill, civil, what'd you call it? Yeah, conversation. There's been a whole lot of stuff on Facebook about this. I mean.
It's gotten way out of here.
It's ridiculous. Most of it's completely uninformed. The council was automatically said to, you know, push business away, but it's just a bunch of junk and people don't know what they're talking about. I think it's a great idea. I think it's a plus to the city. I think it's a plus to Red Brick Knights. I just think it's a good idea and I'm confident with the city working with them, it's gonna turn out to be a great thing. And I think we all agree to that.
Football team, too.
Yeah, football. I'm not gonna get into that.
[laughter] [inaudible].
Councilman Chow?
Um, shout out to the guys at EMS. They did a great job last week. It's a good thing they were on their A-game, because I probably would have died had they not. It's a pretty tough deal, but they did their job and they did it well. The other thing, while we were at the retreat, we talked about changing the format of our meeting more to where Leroy introduces the items on the agenda, gives us some possibilities, and then the mayor mediates the discussion. And I think pretty much all six of us agreed that that's the way we wanted to do it, but it seems the mayor doesn't understand that, so he wants a vote on it. So, Leroy, if you'll put that on our next agenda, we will get that cleared up.
Done.
Do we need to?
Councilman Bafflin?
Is that something that you, let's talk about this a minute. Do you have an issue with that? I mean, I have never answered.
I just, I think that if we're gonna change our process that we've done for a long time, we need to do it in a formal way.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
So, it's up to me now. Yeah, so, I'm extremely happy for the buildings that are getting renovated. And, you know, I hate overturning anybody that gives, that donates their time, but we can't restrict the community. We can't restrict the town, we can't restrict growth. You know, economic development is king and has to be in this town. And it's a beautiful, it's gonna be awesome when it's done. That's all I can say. That's all I've got. Okay. We have got some big things happening next month. We've got Red Brick, right? We got Jeep Fest, and same day, isn't it?
Yep.
So, gosh, people, it's been the whole day here. So, that'll be great. Pollard is back, so we got lots of things going on. And of course, we always have things going on at the airport. You've got an activity out at the airport, don't you, Sean?
Lions coming in.
Lions. Lions. Babe, what was the date of that?
September 18.
18, okay. Put it, anyway, get the 4th, September 4th to September 18th on your calendars, folks. And, and just be aware. We, COVID is, COVID is not going away. So take precautions that you feel are appropriate. You know, get the vaccine, wear the mask. Wash, keep, one thing we've, we've kind of neglected in that whole process is the focus on washing hands, which is, which is the first defense. They teach you that in any kind of medical arena. So just be aware, be aware, be kind, okay? Item number 12, consider approval to convene to executive session to discuss a retirement. A motion and do we have a second?
No, I don't think you do this time, Steve.
No second. Somebody said second, found me.
I did.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Submit your votes.
I'm up in the air.
Just tossed up about it.
See the votes. We got almost unanimous approval to convene to executive session.